The roll call, Ms. Harris, will you help us with that?
Sure. Councilmember Lynch is excused for the hour.
Okay, thank you. We understand he had a death in the family and we express our condolences to him. We need to consider the agenda. I'm told that we do need to consider, we need to remove the revenue and expenditure report for February 23rd. I think we're getting some additional information there, so we're not quite ready to consider that. And then I'm told we also have a drawing to do, maybe that drawing if we did that during the council comments or to the ends of our council comments. So with those two changes to the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve it if so inclined.
Make my motion to approve the agenda with those changes.
Mr. Welling with a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sellers seconding. Any discussion on the motion? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? We have an agenda, thank you. We have the council minutes for March 1st. Any concerns, questions, comments regarding those minutes? If not, we will acknowledge those as they've been prepared and go on to the work session minutes for March 8th. Same thing there, are there any comments, concerns with those minutes?
Yeah.
If not, we'll acknowledge those as well and we'll move on to the bills. You've got a warrant register with today's date on it. Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Welling with a motion.
I'll second.
Is there Mr. Ottley seconding? Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That takes care of the bills. We don't have a revenue report, so we'll go on to council comments. Mr. Ottley, what do you have for us?
I'll second.
Mr. Perks?
Lot of theme tonight.
Mr. Welling?
Well, we have the Celtic Festival this weekend, a lot of people in town and Arissa came back for it, I hear, so. And then the Chamber's doing a something downtown. My email was, I just knew they were something with the St. Patrick's Day, some scavenger hunt or something.
Oh, that's downtown Evanston is doing the scavenger hunt. You've got to find the shamrocks around town and then you enter a drawing and you'll win some downtown H Street tickets.
Cool. Excellent. It's good to see that things are happening and getting summer back to normal and we're doing fun activities, so support those activities and I'll be down there nodding my kilt, but down there watching my granddaughter dance.
Thank you, that's, I don't know, it's a relief to all of us.
I'm pretty sure it is.
For some reason.
I could wear my car.
You what?
The Campbell is the, and they were hated peoples.
Do what you gotta do, David, that's good. Excellent, thank you. Mr. Sellers?
Just did all the Celtic Festival and the stuff in the city and just on a personal note, watch out for ice, it can dump you and it can make your life miserable. And with that said, also, a lot of stuff going on in the world, be mindful of the struggles that people are having, watch for signs and symptoms of mental health and I know a lot of people are struggling right now and I'm seeing it at work, so keep your mind. One more shout out to Rocco and crew for a great job on the jump start, that was a nice finish.
Thank you. Mr. Welling? Thank you, sir. I'll just echo what's been said and we can move on to our Crime Stoppers drawing. Let's do that now, can we? That sounds like an exciting event. You wore the hat, so you had something to.
You don't have to hide, Tammy.
Oh, yeah. Hide.
Her big girl's hat.
Way to take one to the team.
Is that why she's hiding, because she had to take the hat off?
Put your hat off.
That's her hat.
Tammy, you're not that vain, wherever you are back there, you can.
So this is our annual, so 400 tickets.
Excellent.
Third place, so we went to pull third place.
What's third place?
Third place is $100.
Excellent.
Oh, I can't either. Who did that one?
Kent Williams.
I think it's my signature.
I have no idea.
That is a signature and I don't know.
Let me see if I can find his phone number.
Yeah, there's a phone number.
Let's look at it from the chief. He's gonna answer that.
It'll teach you to sign your name more carefully. Go ahead, David.
Who wants to pull that?
Pull it, just do it.
This is $100.
No, 400.
What is it?
400.
$400.
Jeremy Lamb.
Is that related to you?
Woo! There you go.
I'm not so sure how that works.
And I got deep to the bottom.
Yeah, it's bent, I think. I don't know what this tape's for.
Sure is sticky.
This one's $1,000.
$1,000.
If I'm not mistaken, I think that's Sean's fault, isn't it?
That's in Sean's fault.
All right.
Yes, excellent.
I don't get it. He paid for it, isn't he?
Now, did we figure out who the?
Yes.
Did we figure out who that $100 winner was?
I don't know.
Did they say?
I didn't call them. I'll give them a call.
But we don't know who it is, so we can't say they're.
Yeah, we haven't.
Well?
It's scribbles.
I'll call them. I'll be right back.
Well, that's exciting. Thank you, thank you, thanks for letting us be a part of that. Congratulations to all of those winners. Okay, we, under our public hearings and special orders, we do have an appointment to consider with regard to our housing authority. I'd like to bring forth the name of Holly Law to be reappointed to a term to serve on the Evanston Housing Authority, a five-year term to end March of 2027, if somebody would like to make a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Welling with a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Perks, you're gonna second that?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, are there any discussion on the motion? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That's approved and we appreciate Holly for her willingness to continue to help us with the housing authority. We'll go on to our consent agenda, we have two items there, both for the Cowboy Days, a parade route request and a limited malt beverage permit. Is there anyone here for Cowboy Days to?
He didn't think he would make it.
He didn't, okay. I'm looking at this, I don't see any changes from the previous 80 or 85 years, however long it's been now, so.
I don't think he wanted me to steal his scooter.
Oh, okay. You're gonna steal his scooter, is that what he said?
Might, might have to will.
Oh, all right, well, hey, if that's why.
It'd been an interesting struggle.
Yes, it would. Yeah, trying to think where I could go with this and then stay, keep out of trouble and I don't think I can. So, I don't, if there's no changes in that, I think we're all aware of what they plan to do and so I'll just entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda as it's been prepared for.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Ottley with a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Welling seconding. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That approves our consent agenda, thank you. We'll go on to our unfinished business and we'll start there with ordinance 2201. Mr. Bowe, you read that title for us, please.
Your Honor, this ordinance of the City of Evanston amends section 9-3A of Article 2, Chapter 9, fire protection of the city code to adopt the 2021 edition of the International Fire Code.
There's been no changes in the wording of this ordinance since the beginning, it's been there out and it's simply a bring us up to date with current code changes, if there were any, it brings us up to date with those things, is that correct? Any questions or comments, concerns before we move on? This is our third reading, so I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2201 on third and final reading.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Welling with a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Ottley seconding. Any discussion on the motion? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That is approved on third reading. We'll now go on to new business and we'll start there with ordinance 2202. Mr. Bowe, please.
Your Honor, this ordinance approves and authorizes a zone change for property in the city from agricultural established to highway business developing as requested by Equine Capital Network LLC for the land more particularly described herein.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Perks?
All right. Good evening. Dwayne would usually do this, but it's his birthday today.
Oh.
And so I convinced him to go home and I said, "We have three readings, so if I screw this one up, you have two more chances to fix it." So, it's probably what will happen anyway. So this is for the zone change for this property, subject properties, you can see, west of Overthrust and south of the interstate there, north of that development there, that's by the hospital, Sheperdale Estates. This is the current master plan zoning. So, the current zoning right now is agricultural for the subject parcel. Master plan has a highway business with a natural open space through the pipeline corridor and then low-density residential on that south, about 20 acres. Let's see, so they are proposing to change the entire parcel to highway business. With that, it gives them flexibility for their development, I'll show that slide here in a minute. The total parcel is 150 acres, you can, you have, you should have copies of the staff report if you want me to clarify anything. The, it's in line with the master plan change, there is that south portion there that has that as residential, however, I think through development, we can do some buffers and things to help make sure that that, you know, transition to residential still occurs. The reasoning for the, let's see, let me go back to the natural open space to, for connectivity, for public access to Yellow Creek from the Twin Ridge area is kind of the purpose, why that was master planned that way. If this is subdivided through a major subdivision, you know, we can, we can always dedicate that land, that 5% dedication, or we've worked with the developer through the PUD process, we can also make sure that those amenities with public access and trails and things like that are incorporated into the project. So we didn't feel like it made sense to rezone that as open space, but that's why we went all the way down to the south property line and that's what they're proposing, so. This is their development, this did go to PMZ, let's see if I can find that, March 7th, there was a public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote to give a positive support for this zone change at that meeting, so.
Okay.
We also included a list of permitted land uses and conditionally permitted land uses, so you could see kind of what uses would be conditionally permitted or prohibited or permitted with this zone change. As you can see, they have a, they're proposing to do a mixed use, entertainment, also some lodging, hotels, their restaurants, uses, RV, some glamping, I guess they call it, some camping, like little cabins and things like that, so, and then lots of parking, but that's kind of what they're proposing to do at this point, so.
Thank you, I know that this is, this, I'm personally thrilled to see this type of an investment in our community, I recognize that this is, this is a big issue, a big deal, and I know that there are some who may have some concerns for this and I don't know if there's someone here that has some concerns that they would like to share with the city council, I'll invite you to come up and if you've got some concerns, we're more than willing to hear those concerns, if somebody would like to, please. If you'd give us your, your name and an address, that would be wonderful.
Okay, I'm Lori Carlton at 1621 West Center Street. I was at the county commissioners' meeting and met Mr. Eric, I don't remember his last name, who's proposing the development and I think he's, his brother's the construction workers and he's putting up the funding for that. And it does sound exciting and fun, however, I just have four concerns to share and I wonder if in the, in the planning of these proposed facilities, if there's been any kind of feasibility study done in terms of the population to support it. The biggest reason in my mind being that, as you all know, we've seen many Evanston businesses fold and it would be a shame to see the angle of the time and trouble and expense to tear up all that land for a project that big and see it end up lying empty down the road, as has happened to some others here. Also a possible concern is the size of the project in terms of the amount of water usage it would have on account of Younta County being in a drought for, for at least the last five or six years, I believe. And I acknowledge that the drought conditions could improve down the road, but just for the record, Wyoming's hydrologist, Brian Wood, and drought, the drought monitoring system, WRDS, are currently reporting that Younta County is in a, is at a level D2, which is a severe drought, and D4 is being the most exceptionally extreme. Additionally, as you all know, we are, Wyoming is, depends a great deal on their wildlife or the hunting revenue that it brings in, and to that point, I just want to share some stats on, to back that up. The PCTR, that's the Pew Charitable Trust, research people, report that in 2016, that Wyoming's BLM landsaw 909,472 fishing, hunting, and watching visits, which generated 331 million in sales and 24 million in revenue. So my point being that there is a lot of wildlife and that, that is supported by that parcel of land. And I do travel over, over Thrust a lot, enough to have, and I have lived here long enough to see that the wildlife do use that parcel quite a bit for grazing, rest and passage. And there's a gully right next to the church, or the church, I believe it's on the south end of the, of the land, that, where they hang out a bunch. Anyway, there's lots of animal and vehicle collisions occur over there, probably not as much as Highway 150 and 89 and the interstate, but it does see its share. So if this project comes to fruition, I would love to see them, the developers, you know, make some provision for the open and safe passage of the wildlife through that area so that they're not turned out onto the interstate. And lastly, I recall Mr. Eric saying that the RV park would be such that it could cater to the high-dollar outfits rolling through and as we all know, the Evanston cost of living, I think he, they live, they're from Nevada, Evanston cost of living index isn't as high as California and Nevada, so I would hope that our locals could afford to patronize it if it does go forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to share some concerns before we move forward with this? Okay, we appreciate, we appreciate those concerns. I guess the only thing that I would, would say before we move on is, is this is, this is a venture that is, at least so far, and I anticipate that it will continue, that this involves no, no city money whatsoever, this is strictly a private venture, and so certainly it comes with some risks and the investors know that well, perhaps better than, than anyone else, what that risk might be. For me personally, to see someone who is, or a group of individuals who is willing to invest this type of, these types of resources in our community is, is something that we have not seen in, in recent past, especially something that's not associated with, with oil or gas. You know, in the time that I have lived here, which is 40 years or so, obviously, we have been dependent upon natural resources for a long time, we have talked diversity for many, many years and this, this is kind of what that looks like and certainly it, it poses some issues, but at the same time, it represents a significant investment in our community and I personally am appreciative of that, of that effort on their part, that willingness on their part. Granted, it's going to come with some issues that we'll have to work through, so we don't wanna, we don't wanna do damage to the community, we don't wanna do damage to wildlife or anything like that, I don't think that's the plan for anybody, so, but I appreciate, I appreciate those concerns. This is, if we move forward here, it will simply be a first reading, this is an ordinance and so it goes through, it'll have to go through three, three readings before it is finalized in any stretch, so. Any other comments or questions before we move on?
Nice state, one thing, so this is, and Mr. Bowe can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is not approving the project, this is, as you know, this is approving the zone change, which, this could totally go away and we, we showing you this exhibit just so you know of what kind of, and a list of the land uses for this zone, so that you kind of have an idea of what things are approved and could be approved or conditionally approved. So if the developer goes away and we do the zone change, we all need to understand what kind of uses would be, you know, permitted on this project.
Thank you.
And that zone change, from what you showed before, was in line with the master plan anyway?
Correct, for, yeah, for the most part, except for that south end, yeah.
Excellent, thank you for that. Anything else before we? This is a, a ordinance, excuse me, so is there somebody wishes to sponsor this ordinance?
Sponsor here.
Mr. Perks is gonna be our sponsor and I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2202 on first reading. Mr. Sellers making a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Ottley seconding. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That has passed first reading, thank you. We'll go on to resolution 2217. Mr. Bowe, read that title for us, please.
Your Honor, this resolution of the city authorizes the city to enter into a license agreement with Union Telephone Company to provide access and utilities to a cellular communication site.
Thank you.
I guess I'll take this one, Your Honor. As you recall, Union Tel came in front of the council at a work session a couple weeks ago to talk about accessing their communication site through our Red Park area.
Yes.
And at that point in time, I suggested that we do a license agreement and that's what this is. This is a license agreement that would give Union Telephone access and utilities to their communication site. The agreement provides for a license for five years with the right to renew it, I think it's six additional times. Union Telephone will pay the city $5,000 for each five-year period and it'll increase by 10% with each renewal. I reviewed the license agreement, made a couple minor revisions, but I think it's ready to go.
Okay.
And so that's what you have in front of you. Answer any questions if you have them. I think Tyler is here, he can answer any questions if you have them and with that, Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Tyler, is there anything that you'd like us to know?
Um, no, I think Mr. Bowe is coming every day, unless you all have questions that you want me to answer.
Okay, thank you. I, I recognize this is, this is a simple resolution, but is there someone in the audience that is concerned about this particular decision that we're faced with that'd like us to know anything more about it? Is there introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with the motion to pass.
Mr. Welling with a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sellers, second. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That is approved, thank you. Resolution 2218, Mr. Bowe, please.
Your Honor, this resolution of the city authorizes the execution of a professional services agreement with Hazen and Sawyer, is to provide engineering services for the Evanston Water Treatment Plant Process Improvement Study.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Good evening. Our brand-new water treatment plant turns 20 years old this year, believe that or not, and some of the filters are showing some signs of life, that use, and it's time to do a study and, and upgrade them and, and keep them working as they should. It's just been time that, it's time to evaluate them and we are seeing some signs of deterioration in them and it's time to, to be able to, to do the work we need to rehabilitate them and, and keep them functioning.
That was a fast 20 years.
Yeah.
Wow, now, okay. Any questions for Mr. Robinson before we consider this resolution? Seems like almost a housekeeping, maintenance kind of an issue, we want to make sure that the treatment plant continues to function properly and?
Only if you want good water.
You're exactly right. Is there a introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce the motion to pass.
Mr. Ottley with a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Welling seconding. Any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved, thank you. Departments, police department, anything from you guys tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, the 20 ticket was parked open and I would like everybody to buy tickets and also get the Crime Stoppers and make sure it's less use your hat.
We do want to see without the hat, though, Tammy, what's, you know? Excellent, thank you, thank you for that information, congratulations once again to those that won. Ms. Lynn, do you have anything more for us tonight? No? Mr. O'Neill?
Your Honor.
Mr. Parker?
Your Honor.
Mr. Robinson?
No, sir.
No, Your Honor.
Mr. Bowe?
Nothing more.
Fantastic. Public participation, is there anyone here from the public that would like to address the council for any reason, please, come on up.
I just wanted, I cast out a flyer, uh, as we held around, we stayed legislative, this section just ended, and so we've invited representatives from the county to come speak at a legislative breakfast, and that would be on Thursday, April 7th, at 7:30 at the Portland Rose Room in the Rad House.
Excellent.
We'd like everyone to come join us.
Excellent.
And there will be a Q and A, so you can ask some questions.
Excellent, okay.
Dan, could you remove your hat?
Yeah, yeah, I think, no, actually, I think there's a, I think there's a sign out there someplace that says you're supposed to take, isn't there? Isn't there?
I just took it for the flag, it should be.
Anyone else like to address the council? Please, what?
Play the tune.
Okay, okay, excellent, thank you. Psych?
I have a point about it, because I'm not on the board anymore.
Oh, okay.
They will.
Anyone else? Don't want to leave anybody out, if somebody wants to say something, by all means, we're... Okay, if there's not, we'll adjourn, thank you. Okay, if there's not, we'll adjourn, thank you.